Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to call this special meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Please join me, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call of members, please.
Commissioner Abrego, Commissioner Bautista.
Here.
Commissioner Sparza.
Here.
Chair Weisenberger.
Here. I'd like to move to excuse Commissioner Abrego.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bautista.
Here.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay. Item number one, approval of minutes from March 2. We need a motion to approve.
I approve.
Okay. I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bautista.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay. Item number two, Alt Air Paramount LLC. Part 2A, Resolution Number 22012, recommending approval to the City Council of amended conditional use permit number 757 to certify the final subsequent environmental impact report related to the Alt Air Paramount LLC refinery Conversion Project at 14700 Downey Avenue in the M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone. Report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a continuation from the March 2 special Planning Commission meeting regarding the World Energy Alt Air Conversion Project at 14700 Downey Avenue. And MRS Environmental, our consultant, is going to go over a presentation with you for the conditional use permit. Before they do that, I just wanted to read a couple of corrections for you. On the dais there, you have revised reports and resolutions that reflect some corrected conditions, and those, I'll just read those to you right now. So, there's a revision that reflects that two train deliveries per day of 25 cars each are permitted. There is a condition that referenced another condition but had the referenced condition number wrong, so the reports and resolutions have been corrected. And finally, to reflect the staff report, a condition has been added that states when the conversion project is complete, the refinery will not be permitted to process crude oil. The refinery will still blend petroleum that has been processed at a different facility with the renewable fuel that will be produced on-site. And with that, I'll turn it over to Luis Perez, who's going to go through the presentation for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, good evening. My name is Luis Perez. I'm a project manager with MRS Environmental, and with me is Greg Chittick, who's a senior engineer also with MRS. We have been hired by the city and have been working with the city closely for the last couple of years as their independent third party that reviews the project as required by the California Environmental Quality Act. So we'll go through a short presentation this evening, and I got the slide controller.
Thank you.
So, at first, we want to go over what the purpose of tonight's meeting is, so we'll talk a little bit about the process, the proposed project, the purpose and approach of the SEIR. Also, we'll go through a little bit of what the SEIR contains, it's a very thick document. We'll go through some of the issue areas that we have reviewed as required by CEQA. We'll go through some of the conclusions, some of the findings that we came up with as we have reviewed this project extensively through the past couple of years. We also came up with a number of impacts and mitigation measures that we found would be appropriate for the project, and also as required by CEQA, we looked at alternatives and what alternatives could be used to do the project better essentially with lesser impacts, so we'll go through that a little bit. And then we'll talk about what has transpired so far, what the schedule has been, and the public participation. So, the application was originally submitted in June of 2019, and it's an amendment to CUP 757 and also for zone variance. We will go through in the next slide a little bit more details about the project. With regards to the CEQA process, an initial study was prepared and a notice of preparation was issued in June of 2020, essentially stating that the city had found that a subsequent EIR was required for this project, having prepared back in 2013 a mitigated negative declaration for the original project, the original conversion project. As a result of that, a draft SEIR was prepared and released to the public on December 6, 2021, and there was a public comment received until February 3, 2022. We then provided responses to comments, to all the comments that were submitted, and a final SEIR was published February 23, 2022, and that is what is before your consideration tonight alongside the project for recommending to the City Council. So this Planning Commission would look at that SEIR and also take a look at the project itself and then make a recommendation to the City Council. As far as the proposed project, this is a completion of the conversion of the refinery to renewable fuels, which would be made from beef tallow and vegetable oils. Throughout, the throughput would go from the current project level of 3,500 barrels per day to 25,000 barrels per day, or up to 1 million gallons per day of fuels. And renewable fuels will include gasoline, diesel, jet fuel, and propane. Now, as far as the project parameters, this project would require upgrades to refinery equipment, it would require a new hydrogen plant, there will be transportation of trucks an average 300 per day with a peak of 540. There will be 50 railcars per day on two trains, up to 624 trains per year. There will also be three barges per month coming into the port of LA, bringing in some of the feedstock that they need to produce the renewable fuel. And there will be approximately three years of construction to get the refinery up to what it needs to have to begin the process of converting those fuels at those levels. Most refinery products are slated to be transported by truck, and there will also be a construction of a natural gas pipeline into the refinery from the gas company. And one thing to point out is that throughout our analysis, we talk about peak operations, and we point that out because it's a requirement of CEQA that we provide you with what is the maximum possible impact that could occur as a result of the project. And so, in some cases, some of the modeling makes it seem as if there is a lot more impact than there would actually be when the project happens. They're expected, the types of impacts are expected to be substantially less, on average, than what you will see in some of the modeling that we have, and that is by design. We're trying to give you what the worst-case scenario are. So as far as the SEIR, the SEIR is an informational document for the public and decision-makers to use as part of your decision. You want to make a decision based on as much knowledge as possible about what the potential impacts of a project would be. And so we provide you with, first, we provide you with detailed information of what the existing baseline is at the project site, and that is done so that you can then compare the impacts or superimpose the impacts of the project to what is there today. And in this particular case, what is there today is also what could be there today as a result of previous permits that have been issued for this facility. So, the previous permit was the 3,500-barrel-per-day facility of renewable fuels, but also there continues to be an opportunity to use the facility as an asphalt refinery because those permits have not been rescinded. So your baseline is a combination of both those things. And so when we look at the project and we look at the impacts of the project, we're looking at what is it that this project would be adding as far as impacts on top of what I just said, if that makes sense. So then, the SEIR identifies and assesses the environmental impacts of all the proposed activities, it provides mitigation measures to reduce impacts, and it identifies alternatives and then selects the environmentally superior alternative, and we'll go through those. So as far as the SEIR contents, I know that a lot of you have looked at it and go, this is, there is a lot of information here. That's why we provide you with an executive summary. The executive summary is a good place to start, it's a synoptic abbreviation of all the contents of the SEIR. However, we always caution people that if you want to really get into the nitty-gritty and the explanation of the details, it's important to look at each issue area and the impacts and the mitigation and so on. So we provide you with an impact summary table, so it gives you a table that you can quickly look at and see what the impacts are, and also what mitigation would be included. We give you an introduction, a project description, which is essentially what the applicant proposes to do with their project. CEQA also requires us to look at cumulative projects, so we take a look at all the other projects in the area that could have impacts, that could exacerbate some of the impacts that the project would have cumulatively. So are there other projects out there that will be occurring at the same time as this project that could have also impacts, and we're required to look at that, and so that's included. And then we provide you with environmental analysis and mitigation measures, as I said before, alternatives, and then a mitigation monitoring program, and then there's a series of appendices also. So, when we talk about issue areas, we look at what things could be affected, what areas of the environment could be affected as a result of the project. And in this particular case, as required by the law, we look at aesthetics, visual resources, what could happen once you make the modifications, what is it going to look like for members of the public that have been looking at the facility today and what those changes would mean. We look at air quality, would there be additional emissions as a result of the project? We look at climate change and greenhouse gases. We look at safety and risk of upset, and then hydrology, water quality, land use, noise and vibration, transportation, cultural resources, public services, and environmental So, one of the things that we do in the document is we classify impacts, and there are four typical classifications that are required again by the CEQA law. The first one is, is the impact significant and unavoidable, and that gets classified as Class 1 impact, where the impacts may not be fully mitigated. So we may find that there is an impact, and we can try to put mitigation towards it, have conditions of approval towards it, but we cannot fully mitigate it to less-than-significant levels. So that's a Class 1 impact. Then we have impacts that are less-than-significant with mitigation, or Class 2 impacts. So those impacts are those that we take and we're able to mitigate them to less-than-significant. Then we have impacts that are less-than-significant. There may be adverse impacts, but they're not really considered significant. And then lastly, we have beneficial impacts. So for this particular project, we have significant and unavoidable impacts in three issue areas: air quality, hazards, and noise. And the significant impacts that were included, that were identified, included air quality for construction emissions that could exceed the local and regional thresholds of the South Coast Air Quality Management District. We also had an impact in operational emissions, which also could exceed the South Coast Air Quality Management thresholds. In this particular case, for operations, it would be only the regional ones, not the localized ones, and that's due primarily to the increase in truck and rail transportation. We also have a safety and risk impact that is significant and unavoidable and is related to construction of the new pipeline, releases from that pipeline in heavily populated areas introduces hazards, and so that's considered significant and unavoidable. And then lastly, I'm sorry, noise, there is an increase in daily and annual train traffic along the connection to the rail mainline located about one mile to the west of the refinery site. So those are the ones that we have as significant and unavoidable impacts. So, we, just because the impact is significant doesn't mean that we don't find mitigation towards it. We do as much as we can to ensure that there should be as much mitigation as possible, and as a result, we come up with a series of requirements. And some of those are up there on your slide and are detailed in the environmental document. There's a construction management program for air quality, there's a requirement for new air trucks, there is a requirement for reduction of nitrogen oxides emissions, and there's a requirement for monitoring of emissions also. As far as safety and risk, there's no additional requirements, and the reason for that is there are already a number of requirements that are part of federal and regional laws that go sufficiently far enough that no additional requirements, we cannot find anything else that we can impose upon the project. And then as far as noise, we have railroad noise reduction measures, noise assessments, and noise monitoring and management plan. So, let's see. So we also have, as I mentioned before, we also have these Class 2 impacts, which are significant, but they're mitigable. And in this particular case, we have, in aesthetics, we have a lighting impact, but it's easily mitigated by having light shielding in those areas where additional lighting is required. We also have noise impacts, and then there are some refinery construction and operational impacts that we looked at there, and so we have daytime limits for construction, we also have noise and a management plan to ensure that those impacts are reduced to a less-than-significant level. We also have some transportation impacts, and there are some requirements for restriping of Lakewood Boulevard and the transportation management plan to ensure that we're reducing those impacts to less-than-significant levels. And then finally, we have some tribal cultural resources impacts, and they're related to potential findings during excavation of cultural resources, and so there's monitoring requirements and participation of Native American monitors so that they can ensure that proper treatment is given to those cultural resources if found. Now, in this particular case, we also have a beneficial impact from the project, and that's related to renewable products that are going to be produced. They will provide a cleaner source of energy by reducing greenhouse gas emissions by over 60% relative to fossil fuels. We also have, the project would produce up to 50 million gallons per year of renewable fuels, which would equate to reducing approximately 365,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide. We also have, overall cancer risk in the community will decline as a result of the project, and it would provide beneficial financial benefits to the city via sales and use taxes. So we talked earlier about alternatives. When we looked at the project, we looked at a number of alternatives to make sure that we weren't missing something that could be meeting the goals of the project and still reduce some of the impacts that the project has. And so we looked at a no-project alternative, which is actually a requirement by CEQA, and when you look at the no-project alternative, that would involve not modifying the refinery and most likely continuing with the smaller renewable fuel projects, but also a continuation potentially of some sort of crude oil refinery or asphalt refinery, since there are permits out there that could still be exercised. So we also looked at relocating the pipeline to other routes, and we also looked at transportation of products via pipeline, which would reduce the number of trucks on the roads. And then you see the other things that we considered but were eliminated because they did not meet the goals of the project. So, as far as the findings were concerned, we found that transportation of products via pipeline would be the environmentally superior alternative, and it comes as no surprise, obviously, if you can transport everything by pipeline, you take trucks of the road, you have less emissions, you'll have less traffic, and so you will have fewer impacts. And so it would reduce the severity of some of the impacts, and it would reduce the overall level of impact, as the slide states. One of the issues with this, of course, and there are conditions that are put within the resolution that require the applicant to use transportation via pipeline to the maximum extent that they can, but obviously, their market is a constantly evolving market, and they don't know to which places they can send a pipeline to, or the pipelines that exist may not go to all the places where they may be selling their products to. So there are some limitations as to how much they can do this. So as far as the process itself, the SEIR has had a number of opportunities for public participation. We conducted a public workshop meeting December 13 of last year to present the SEIR and the findings. We also had a public comment meeting on January 5 to receive comments from the public on the SEIR. We had the public submit comments by the February 3 deadline, and there have been the March 2 hearing where you took comments from the public, and then public meetings tonight, and then subsequent City Council meetings that would take consideration of the project. So finally, the EIR process, a number of other agencies also provided comments at the end of the public comment period, and those were responded to. All the final responses to comments were provided as part of Appendix H, that is part of your package, and now it's up to the city decision-makers to consider the project and the SEIR and make a final decision. That concludes our presentation.
Okay, let's move to the hearing testimony tonight, John.
Okay. Yes, we do have quite a few speaker cards. I'll just call them in the order that I received them. The first one is from Richard Castle. Would you mind turning the mic on? Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me now? Okay. My name is Richard Castle. I live at 16418 Downey Avenue, right here in the city of Paramount. I've been living here over 50 years. I've seen the refinery flare up every once in a while when I was growing up, but I feel that we should approve the SEIR with the accommodations. I'm for the project. I've been with IBW Local 11 for 22 years now. We work very safely. Our policy is zero drugs and alcohol on-site, so our safety record speaks for itself. Since I've been in the trade, I've seen the reductions of injuries and accidents happen with the union workers. We pride ourselves on being safe, installing the work with workmanship, quality workmanship in a timely manner that we're a propper to everything. Also, this would also benefit our city with the taxes, as they talk about, the taxes of revenue income, because they're going to be producing, they're also going to talk, and they were also talking about bringing in local for employment, local people for employment, so that way, it benefits our city with all the incoming as well. The workers, they're going to bring in income into our city, which also profits us. And it also, anything that reduces the air quality makes it better for our community, especially for the older people in the community. That's what we look at, because we're not getting any younger. And then, it's right next to a trailer park, I know that, the schools, right there, the high school, elementary school, Wertz Elementary School. So, for it to reduce the byproducts too of sulfur, H2S gases, benzene, which is a cancer-causing agent, with the biodiesel fuel production, that reduces our air quality, the NOx, the SO2s as well. So, I look at it as a positive thing for our city, and I vote for approval. I approve this plan.
Next, we have Herb Escobedo.
My name is Herb Escobedo. I feel honored to be addressing the City Council, and for the reason, especially as a resident, I live here now 22 years, and my address down the street, my kids grew up here, went to the Paramount School District, and I can give my point of view as a resident first in relation to the project being a clean fuels project, that's something. I've seen the progress for the city of Paramount, and I see how they work hard on helping the businesses, I've seen how they beautify the downtown, right here in this area, I've seen the efforts. But I think of this project as a leap forward. I mean, this is a big step. I can make a kind of an analogy, right now, we have an old car beaten up, and we have a chance to buy us a brand-new one that's going to be less polluted and giving us better in every sense. You know, why not thinking forward? Let's be a beacon of progress around this city, so around, we're going to be providing as a city, if we complete this project, these clean fuels is going to be, I was impressed with these numbers that they gave us, 60% reduction in emissions. I mean, what else do we want to be motivated as a city to have this kind of a plan now? I understand that the city residents always have a concern of industrial plants. Many people will be asking, oh, but we're going to have a flare. Well, they used to build old technology back in the day, and they were safe. Now, we can be confident that with the new technology available nowadays, we're going to have a much efficient, much cleaner, better plant in every sense kind of a plant, and that's just the aspect of clean fuels and better industry and safer, just on that aspect. But now, let's think about the revenue for the city. My best guess is that more products sold, more business, more revenue for the city also in taxes. This is a win-win situation in every sense, on the environmental side and also on the revenue for the city. And one that is very, very important for me is, I'm a member of IBW, the best manpower that you're going to have, the best electricians in the industry, we provide them. You have professional people that are going to be working, and it's going to be getting not only business for the city, but a gift that is going to keep on giving for years to come.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, distinguished board members. My name is Mike Kufchak, and I am the Director of Veterans Affairs for IBW Local Union 11. And I also conduct community outreach as well though, too. What makes me eminently qualified for my job is the 32 years that I spent on active duty in the Marine Corps, and I am the former Sergeant Major of the 1st Marine Division down at Camp Pendleton, California. So, with that being said, I am speaking in support of the amended conditional use permit for the World Energy Renewable Fuze Conversion Project, as it has a great propensity to uplift this community, but not only the community, but your veteran population as a whole. So my direct interest is regarding the economical development of jobs that this would create for the veterans of this community. Based on your last census here in the city of Paramount, you are probably upward of 1,000 veterans living and residing in this community right now. So, we, the IBW, coupled with the building trades, recruit veterans into the skilled trades to not only provide them with good jobs, but to provide them the intangibles in life that they need for sustainability for their families, health, medical, dental, vision, prescription drugs that support their families. Not only that, but their earned dollars would also be spent and of course invested here in the city of Paramount as well though, too. But in the bigger picture, it also helps eviscerate veteran homelessness, of which is a result of depression that leads to PTSD, all of which can be avoided if we just give our veterans in this community here an opportunity to exceed, a chance to earn a decent living. They've historically ensured our freedom, our democracy, and certainly our way of life. So here's an opportunity for us to give back to them. By approval of the refinery being converted into a renewable energy production site that lowers emissions in the community benefits not only the veterans, but this community as a whole. And given consideration of the California Air Resources Board's with the lowering of the emissions in here, it makes it better for everybody in this community here. Thank you very much for your time.
Hey, good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Ray Lawson, and I'm a 22-year resident of Bellflower, just east of Paramount. My name is Ray Lawson, and I'm a 22-year resident of Bellflower, just east of Paramount. And I'm also a carpenter, and I've got my brothers and sisters here from the Carpenters Union to help represent, showing support for the Altair World Energy Conversion. I've also worked at the old Paramount Petroleum, and for years, anybody that's worked there know that it needed an upgrade, that it was in dire need of an upgrade. So I appreciate World Energy and what they're doing here, with the renewable process that they're doing here, and also the green energy, the clean energy. I've raised four children in, in this area, and we've seen the releases over the years. Two of my children have asthma, my wife had asthma. I would have to leave work, come home to take them to the hospital when they had asthma attacks. So we most definitely appreciate the cleaner, greener process that's going on here. So we, we know that that can lead to long-term chronic breathing problems, and it also leads to missed work, and it also leads to more expensive healthcare, you know. So they're bringing my children up through all that. Yeah, it was, I would miss work, and it was expensive getting them breathing processes. Anyone that's had a child with asthma, my daughter would have to be on a breathing machine, and you know, it was expensive getting those treatments. So we're right, the neighbor right next to the east of Paramount. So we appreciate that, you know, it really means something. When you talk, talk about the health aspects, you talk about the family aspect. My son, he played sports growing up, my daughter was a cheerleader, and a lot of times it affected her and a lot of other young people on, that wanted to do these sports activities outdoors. So it most definitely will impact the families around here for greener, cleaner air. What World Energy is doing, we respect that, we appreciate that. We, the carpenters, we support this process, and we hope that you do pass it. Thank you.
Okay, next is Omar Arteaga.
Good afternoon, my name is Omar, part of Local Five, Indian project leaders. I think should approve the SEIR.
Nicholas Garcia.
Good evening. I'm a business agent for Boiler Makers Local 92. We have several members that are working in this project right now on the demo phase, which is, you can see literally all these guys right here, and they are working on this project. Our men are skilled and trained. We have, we believe in skilled and trained workforce. We have apprentices there that are being taught on the job. They're, they're just not off the street coming in and, you know, like they had before. Now they're actually coming in, they're being trained. All, all these trades here do the same thing. They are safety orientated. We got to make sure that this goes through to keep union members, blue collar men, working that are live in this community. I live in this community. I live just south, I live in North Long Beach, right next to the, not right next to the freeway. My dollars are spent in this community. My kid went to school two blocks away from the, from Paramount, from the, from the refinery at Baxter Elementary in Bellflower. I got another kid coming up that I'm probably just in the same way. So I have interest in this area. This is where my money's spent, this is where my, my whole family's money's spent. These gentlemen also live in the area as well. This is what we need, to be honest. We need these jobs, these blue collar jobs for our men, that make sure this is done safely, done right. That's pretty much all I got to say.
Next, we have William Troy Loveland.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Troy Loveland. I work over there at World Energy right now, doing the demo phase. And I've worked in refineries for many years. One thing about, the thing that we do, it's safety first. Safety and the, and the environmental impact is like on the top level of everything. And I can honestly say since I've been out there that not one drop of anything's ever touched the ground. Like we have kiddie pools, we got pump trucks, we're like, we're, everything is like super, like above, above grade safety. And, and the, and the environmental part of it is like huge. You know, I'm a boiler maker, journeyman boiler maker, and, and all my brothers and sisters are all trained professionals, just like everybody in this room. And we're out there to, you know, to, to, to do this job. We all want to make money. The, the, the city wants to make money. But first and foremost, we're, we're a part of a new, a new thing that's going into California as far as the clean renewable energy. You know, we have that, they, they just had a plane that went across the country with, with clean renewable diesel. And, and I know that it's coming. This is California, and, and we could be a part of it here. I'm a local, I've, I've been here my whole life. And, and I'm just grateful to, to be able to come in front of you and, and present this. Thank you, I hope you guys approve this, this, this project.
Next is Sonia DeLeon.
Good evening, my name is Sonia DeLeon. I'm a school board member, but I come in behalf of myself, representing myself. And if you ask me, do I approve of this, I would tell you honestly, wholeheartedly, absolutely no. And I know there's, there's all these people right here because they need a job, just like we need gas in our cars, and we have wars, and we don't realize that those wars, that, that gas is blood. And so we know, living here, it's going to cause more deaths. We already know with that report, it says that there's going to be not, no mitigation possible for the air quality. I already have a lot of students and family members that suffer from asthma. I have a lot of people, and I've told World Energy, you have killed a lot of our neighbors, point blank. But I know that people, it's all politics. I know who's who and who puts people up there, and they all come together in a packet. So I know that by myself and the community, we're not going to beat World Energy. Because the people that sit up there, they're part of the problem. And so all I could ask is for you to listen, that we can afford to have this. If anything, we should move these companies elsewhere. We need, we, but even if they moved, the, the facility, it's so environmentally impact, you couldn't put anything there, you couldn't put housing in there, it would be a wasted space. So being said that, of course, you're not going to listen to me, you're going to listen to where the money is. And that's bottom line, we're a capitalist society. So at least I beg of you, city of Paramount, to please get the best air quality filters for our students in their classrooms, for the people in our neighborhood, okay? You have to make sure that the sound level is low enough or two standards, because we have students getting, trying to get an education. And that's all I'm going to ask for, because I know I'm not going to be heard, and I know there's a lot of people here standing, brothersome, but I know my community, they're working their butts off, and I'm representing them, and there's thousands of them, but they're not here. But they voted for me as a school board member, so I know that I represent my people. Mi gente, este, este no es la solucion, pero se va a seguir puchando adelante hasta que todos niños tengan una educación y no tengan que sobrevivir en unos trabajos que no son bien para ellos. Thank you.
Jose DeLeon.
Hello, good evening. Nice to see union people here supporting. What about if we combine union and social justice, especially if we talk about the environment? You also have to think about the community. I understand, we all need a job, I need a job.
Mr. DeLeon, you need to address the commission, please?
Yes. Question for you. Do you spend time reading the environmental impact in this decision? Because we know that it's like over 400 pages. We know that everyone is talking about win, win, win. Yes, corporations and our Phillips here, they're going to win because they're going to have a job. What about the community? What the community is going to get in exchange? Because as far as I know, I know, people is already complaining about the noise. And they barely are changing some stuff. It's so funny, a couple months back, Mr. Biden talking about climate change here, climate change there, inviting leaders from around the world, but they never talk about overconsumption. And that's the biggest problem that we have. This opportunity is a good opportunity, but not to overproduce what they want. I would say to reduce the production. Why? Because we already have a problem. We have commune six, we have a bunch of industry, metal industry, building parts for weapons. And let's be clear, there is no such a clean fuel. Come on, be realistic. We are getting all the stuff from the, from the mother earth. There's no such a thing of clean fuel, clean energy. Espero que tomen en consideración a la comunidad, que no se dejen presionar por las personas aquí presentes. Esta decisión es muy importante. La pandemia nos dio una gran oportunidad, una etapa de transición. Pudimos haber transformado todas las fuentes de trabajo acá, y podemos transformar eso. Espero tomen en consideración eso.
Next, we have Rafael Piñatell.
Good afternoon, good evening, and thank you for having us here today. My name is Rafael Piñatell, and I am a local resident of North Long Beach. I am also a representative with Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. And we represent over 60,000 members in the Southwest. Over 4,000 members here in sunny Southern California, and over 2,000 here in this vicinity. We're asking today that the planning commission, that you would approve this project. As you well know, that there is already a PLA in place. So we're asking that you continue to support a skilled and trained workforce, local hire provisions, veteran provisions, disadvantaged worker provisions. We, all those jobs are very important, because if members in the community are able to earn their finances in the community that they live in, then they can turn around and spend the money that they earned in the community that they live and work. So we're asking you again to please approve this project to go forward to city council for final approval. Thank you very much.
Stephen Donahue.
Good evening, Council. My name is Stephen Donahue. I'm a 40-year-plus resident of the city of Paramount. I was born here, went to school here, raised my family here. I currently live just down the street from the refinery, right there in Somerset in Georgia. I too, I'm a 14-year member of the Carpenters Union. We support this project. I've also worked at the old refinery, currently have members working there now, you know, involved in the upgrade and what's going on, and, and we understand, you know, the, where we're going with this project. As a former Carlton Forge employee, I mean, I get it that you guys are real, you know, it's, the environment is real important, you know, with all the things going on. But we do support this project. We're in support of the Altair World Energy Renewable Fuels Conservation Project and city approval of the draft sequence environmental impact and conditional use permit. I believe the city has conducted a thorough environmental review under SEQA to analyze the benefits and potential impact of the project for our community. Paramount Facility previously a petroleum refinery has received significant upgrades and is a far cleaner plant under World Energy's ownership. World Energy is converting a former asphalt crude oil refinery into 100% renewable fuel production facility, one of the cleanest fuel refineries in the world. I recognize the need for the low carbon fuel produced by World Air and its Paramount Facility to address both climate change and local air pollution. I am proud to have these cleaner renewable fuels such as sustainable aviation fuel be developed in Paramount. I appreciate World Air's excellent safety record operating the facility. I support the Altair World Energy Renewable Fuels Conservation Project as it will support our local economy by bringing high-paying jobs close to our homes. We know this project is cleaner for Paramount than what has been there at the location for nearly a century. I appreciate the opportunity to provide public comment at any upcoming public meetings organized by the city. Thank you for considering my remarks as part of the public comment on this essential clean energy project. Thank you so much.
Next is Anthony Campos.
Good evening, Chair, co-chair and commissioners. My name is Anthony Campos Vias. I'm a, I stand here before you as a proud professional union carpenter with my brothers and sisters right here. Chair, I just wanted to let you know, I'm a member of the local community. I know how beautiful the city of Paramount is. I remember the weekends coming to the Paramount Swamp Meet, the outdoor Swamp Meet, enjoying time here, the beautiful drive-in. I myself even graduated from Paramount Adult School. I know how beautiful the city, city is. And now I stand here before you was opportu, was opportunity to work in the city of Paramount. If it were, if it were to pass, wow, thank you, Lord. I stand here and I thank the Lord for giving me the opportunity and the possibility to work in Paramount. Thank you, World Energy. And hopefully, soon, I'll be able to thank you for giving me that opportunity. That's all I have. Thank you.
Next is Alfredo Benuelos.
Good evening, members of the commission, and everyone here present. My name is Alfredo Benuelos, and I have a lot of concerns about this project moving forward, particularly safety concerns in regards to the health of the community. We've already, in my belief, endured enough from the, all of the industries that have been here, and as well as the petroleum operation that was being conducted previously by Paramount Petroleum. So that being said, I understand, and I stand with support of the union members here. I support every one of your rights to democratize yourself at work. However, in this case, particularly because there seems to be a clear conflict of interest in the sense that they're here advocating for employment contracts. This represents an extremely lucrative opportunity for This represents an extremely lucrative opportunity for all of these trade unions and which I support, but those deployments, those jobs are not gonna go. You're gonna continue to have jobs in other projects. It doesn't necessarily have to be here. And the fact that it's at the expense of the community, of the kids, of my parents. My mother suffered two instances of cancer already. Luckily, she survived it. My aunt just passed away last year. And we don't know how much of the industry and that has been taking place here in the city had to do with the fact that they became sick in this manner. So we talk a lot about the reduction of emissions. And if you paid close attention to some of the previous slides there, the, when, when it's spoken about decrease in emissions or decrease in contamination, it specifically says relatively. So it's clear that it's relative to the industry, it is not to the actual project here. If I'm mistaken, I'd like to be corrected on that. I'd, I'd like to know furthermore if it actually is gonna decrease the contamination that we're gonna endure here in the city. We're good, we understand that renewable energy is the way to move forward in the future, for the future of the country. However, renewable energy should, or any type of energy production should be placed in the middle of residential neighborhoods at the expense of people's lives in exchange for profit. I stand in opposition of this. I think we should be discussing how to move these industries away from residential neighborhoods here in the community, and not so much of how to expand their operation to an additional 25,000 barrels of, of oil, right? So I urge you to please consider the lives of the community members here and your own families. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the last one is Jonathan Grisalva.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Grisalva. I'm a local resident from Downey and a business representative. 19,000 skilled and trained operating engineers from Local 12, and we strongly support this project. Thank you.
We do have one more. I'm sorry, I'm, is it Samuel, Sance?
Good evening. Sam Solinsky, I'm a carpenter with 562, resident South Bay. Support this project. Believe it's very forward-thinking for the city of Paramount to look to the future. I believe there's a bigger issue with consumption and usage, but at this point, I think this is incredibly forward thing to do with renewables. Southwest Carpenters are in a lot of, lot of trades in this room, have a very high regard for safety and construction. I spent several years in school getting trained and support local hire and skilled and trained workforce. Thank you very much for your time.
And that's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion to close the public hearing portion of this meeting.
I make a motion to close the public hearing?
A second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista?
Here.
Commissioner Sparza? Chair Weisenberger?
Yes. Okay, item D here on the, is a motion is in order. And this is to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number 22012 recommending approval to the city council for this conditional use permit, amended conditional use permit.
Well, I have a lot of concerns, so I don't wanna approve it, I just wanna keep conditioning. There is a lot of things that I feel like right now we shouldn't approve, so I just wanna investigate a little bit more, especially for air quality and where it's at, location. There's still high school, there's a elementary school. So I just wanna make sure that air quality there is, is gonna be, like, there's gonna be filters and things that will help with our education for our kids. So I have a kid that goes to Paramount High School, and so I wanna make sure that, I'm not saying I'm not approving it, I'm just saying that I wanna make sure that everything is the way it's supposed to before we approve.
Okay, so we don't have a motion here?
No.
See the motion.
What's that?
So I just wanna put a condition, I guess, to further investigate and further see how they can help us out with that.
So is that the, we have a motion then from Commissioner Batista, is that the way it works, John?
Commissioner Batista has made a motion to continue this matter?
Yeah, continue the matter, yeah.
And Commissioner, would you, do you have any specific questions you would like to ask the consultants or the staff that they can bring back to you for information?
I think I do want more information about like the air quality, how, I know you're saying that your safety and stuff like that, but how about the neighboring, like the residents, the schools? Because we're all, there's teachers, there's principals, there's kids involved, and so I just wanna make sure, how are you gonna support that as well? I know you're gonna support all these people, and I, I truly believe that it's gonna be a good thing, but how are you gonna not just support them, but the people that live in the city of Paramount?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners Greg Chittick with MRS Environmental, I'm engineer, worked on a project with, with John, with the city, so we're city consultants. So a lot of modeling was done looking at the air quality impacts, and we determined that there would be some impacts. You'll see that in the, in the SEIR in terms of localized issues. And so some of the mitigation that we, that we are requiring that they do is to work with the school district to make sure that their filtration system is well-maintained and supplied with materials. As you may be aware, the air, the school district currently has air filtration that they've done as part of COVID practices. And so we've been in communication with the school district about what sort of filter replacements they would need, what sort of maintenance and stuff like that. And Altair would be supplying those, those materials. In addition, they're making filters available to the community, all of the community residences that are within what's called the federal nitrogen dioxide impact zone, which modeling showed there could be some hours during the year during construction when, when health standards could be exceeded. And so making those filters available to those residences will help with that issue. It doesn't eliminate that issue, because if you're outside, or if, if you're in a room where there isn't a filter, for example, but it does help to alleviate some of the potential impacts. There's other requirements that we have on them as well, including using the cleanest, highest-tier level of construction equipment, so that really reduces substantially the amount of nitrogen dioxide emissions that they could have. But even with all of these, there, there's still some potential impacts left, but those measures are requirements, and they have agreed to implement them, so.
How about noise? I mean, obviously, there's gonna be noises in construction for, what, three, four years when they're doing all this? I mean, obviously, there's a high school, there's an elementary school. So what, what about noise? How are you gonna remove that?
So we did a lot of noise modeling, there's fairly sophisticated noise models. And what we found was that you, you really can't do it at night, because it's just very difficult to do construction at night and not impact the neighbors. So Altair did agree, after a lot of discussion, to, to not do construction at night. And the, the city of Paramount municipal code allows construction during the day without necessarily any limits there. So there are some potential impacts during the day, but we didn't find those to be significant because the municipal, municipal code allows you to do construction during the day, as would be the case if you were building condos or working on a residential project, for example. There, there are some problems that we found, some impacts, well, along the noise, along the rail line, because it's very difficult to, to develop mitigation, because you have to work with the rail companies, and they're federally exempted from a lot of localized requirements. And so Altair is, is committed to working closely with them, but none of those, we can be sure, would actually be implemented. There's gonna be a substantial increase in the number of trains that would be coming into the refinery, and that was a potentially significant impact that we found in the, in the studies.
Yeah, so then traffic is also gonna be an issue, right?
Yes. So we did a lot of traffic studies, both for level of service type of thing, which in other words is the congestion that you would have, as well as a relatively new thing that's required under SEQA, which is the vehicle miles traveled. And so SEQA has sort of taken a step away from looking at congestion and using that as a threshold, but we looked at it anyway because we found that it's something that a lot of jurisdictions wanna know about anyway. So the, the traffic models for particularly the Lakewood and Somerset intersection show that you would still stay below the thresholds defined in, in the general plan if, if you did some restriping at the intersection. And so we have that as a requirement, and we've been working with the city of Bellflower since it's technically their intersection about that. But it is, on a peak day, it's 540 trucks, which is a lot of trucks. And so, but we, the models still show that you would be less than the thresholds for significance.
How about the safety and the risk that it can, obviously, we're living here, like, I live right off the Somerset, so how about that?
So there, it's, as a petroleum refinery, handles a lot of hazardous materials, and in its new configuration, it would also handle a lot of hazardous materials. Particularly the large propane bulge that they have there, you know, if they were to explode, it could impact areas. But what we found was that at least at the refinery, the hazards would be somewhat less than they were under the petroleum refinery. And so SEQA looks at incremental increases over the baseline. So we didn't see at the refinery itself an incremental increase over the way it operated when it was a petroleum refinery. But the one issue that we did have was that they're putting in a brand-new pipeline that runs all the way down Lakewood, and that would be a new hazard introduced into the community, and so we found that would be significant.
Right, so if it does explode, what are we talking about here?
You're looking at a potential impact of a, of a couple hundred feet, there's houses, there's businesses located within that distance. You could potentially impact, impact those, those communities.
So I'm not ready to approve it. Can we just further, you know, investigate and?
Are you making a motion, Commissioner?
Yes.
A motion to continue this matter?
Yes.
When would you like to continue it to?
In a month? Or two months?
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. You need a second. If there's not a second, then someone else would have to make a motion for something else.
Well, I think, to me, they have done a lot of investigating on this project, and I am for it, honestly, because they've done a lot of work, a lot of work to do this project. And I think it's gonna be good for the city. So the way I stand is I'm recommending approval to the city council to approve this project. I am, so.
Mr. Chair, before we do that, there needs to be a, a response to the motion to continue, and then you can have another discussion. So there's a motion on the floor, is there a second on that motion?
Okay, it doesn't, it doesn't look like we have a second.
Okay, the motion fails for lack of second.
Okay, so we have another motion then, Ernie, would you like to make a motion to approve this?
I have a motion to approve it, to approve it to the city council, I do. I'm very strong about that, because they've done a lot of work on this project, they have. They investigated a lot. We have a lot of people that came to us stating they do want the project. We could have probably filled the room three times this, and this is the way I stand, so I make a motion to approve it.
And Mr. Chair, that motion would be for Resolution Number PC 22-012.
Right.
Then you would have to make a motion for the second one, so one at a time.
Okay, so this is just for part A?
Part A, right.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion, and I will second the motion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Chair, could we have you include the errata that was included in your binder with this?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The errata, that document at the end of the item.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Cover is referring to the errata which contains those additional conditions that weren't in there earlier. And the motion would be for improvement resolution with the, with the added conditions.
Yes.
Okay, so Ernie, you wanna amend your, your motion?
This is.
To include these, these three changes?
On the amendment to the conditional use permit number 767?
No, this one.
The Altair Renewable Fuels Conversion Project?
With the, with the additions that?
The additions that we have to report.
Okay. That's the motion.
Very good.
And I'll second that. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes. Okay, let's move to item 2B, Resolution Number 22-011. This one is recommending approval to the city council of zone variance number 409, a request by Altair Paramount LLC for a variance to exceed the 55-foot height limit to allow the installation of various pieces of equipment related to Altair Paramount LLC refinery conversion project at 14700 Downey Avenue in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. Okay, staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'll be doing this presentation. Ivan, you wanna hit the lights? Okay, so this variance request is to exceed the 55-foot height limit to allow the installation of various pieces of equipment, including process vessels, a hydrogen generation unit, and a pre-treat unit. The property is at 14700 Downey Avenue in the heavy manufacturing zone. And this is associated with the amendment to conditional use permit number 757. So the municipal code requires that findings be made before a zone variance is approved. There need to be unique or exceptional circumstances. So the refinery functions for renewable fuel production are dependent on equipment and towers that exceed the 55-foot height limit in the municipal code. Another finding is that the approval must not be detrimental to the public welfare. Fuel produced from animal fat and vegetable oils will have reductions in various emissions as was demonstrated in the previous presentation. And another finding is that the variance must not adversely affect the Paramount general plan. The general plan anticipates continued operation of the refinery. And here's aerial of the refinery. Ivan, can you go back one? Okay, and here's a schematic, the areas in purple are where new equipment and processes will take place. And we've got some photo simulations, this one's looking east on Downey Avenue, on the right is existing, I'm sorry, on the left is existing, on the right is what it is intended to look like after the equipment has been installed. This one is a view from Castana Avenue looking south. Again, the left is existing, the right is what it will look like after the construction is done at the refinery. This is looking southwesterly from the parking lot at Walmart. Left again is existing, right is what it will look like after construction. And then finally, this is looking north from Somerset Avenue. On the left is the existing conditions, and then on the right is what it's proposed it will look like after construction is done. So the views at the refinery will not substantially change. The taller vessels will have similar structures, including ladders and landings as existing equipment. The visual character of the area will remain the same. And the renewable fuels project will allow for production of fuel with significantly, with a significantly lower carbon footprint. And we're recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And we're recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, then let's hear some testimony. We have any tonight, John?
We don't have any speaker cards for this item?
In that case, we need a motion to close the public hearing portion of this.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes. And let's see. We have a, we have to include any changes in this portion too?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Okay, yeah, the zone variance, right. Okay, so then, we are to the point here where we need a motion to adopt this Planning Commission Resolution number 22011 with the changes that we've outlined in this packet here. And that is to recommend to the city council to approve this request. Okay, we need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve with a zone variance number 409 Altair Paramount LLC and adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 2212. And I'm recommending approval to the city council of amendment conditional use permit number 757 and to certify the final subsequent environmental impact report related to the Altair Paramount LLC Refining Conversion Project at 14700 Downey Avenue in the M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone.
Mr. Chair, you previously voted on that, the CUP. This is for the zone variance.
This is for the zone variance.
Okay, all right, we have a second? Okay, I'll second it then. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes. Okay, that takes us to the comments portion of our meeting tonight. City Attorney. Okay, Commissioners, any comments? No? Okay, staff?
No comments.
I guess we do have a comment.
Comment that I think this project will go forward, I hope, from the city council. And good luck.
Okay, and there were no comments from staff? Okay, in that case, we are going to adjourn this meeting. And our next meeting then will be April 12th at 6:00 PM.